Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, January 27, 2020, and we will begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Ane.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great honor and privilege to have with us this evening Dr. Chris Holland, who serves as the pastor of the Father's House, as well as FOP chaplain for Lodge 86.
Would you bow your head in prayer with me, please? Father God, we stand before you tonight with our heart and souls full of thanksgiving. You've given us life and you've given us liberty. We are most thankful and aware of your daily blessings. Tonight, these great leaders sit at the city gates to make decisions that affect human lives. They will make decisions that have consequences of major importance with powerful impact. These decisions affect us financially, educationally, morally, civilly, and physically. We are facing an increase of violent crime in a way we have not seen. Increase is out of our control, but not out of our reach. The righteous should not have to live in fear while the violent are loose to reoffend. Your word says in Proverbs 29:2, "When the righteous increase, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people groan." People that should be able to dwell in safety. We, as a people, reach out to you, Father, and to this body for help. In the Scriptures, you've said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular tonight, this great assembly of council members. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of and for the people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good for all, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and their joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Indianapolis. We ask this in your most precious name, my God and my Lord Jesus. Amen and amen.
If you join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are 24 council members present this evening. Counselor David Ray has asked to be excused. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of guests and visitors. Madam Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bless you. I'd like to introduce Tomalisa Smith and Chris from UENDI, two students with us this afternoon or this evening. Stand up. Don't be shy.[274.02][274.02](APPLAUSE).
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize these two ladies. Take them, please. Emily and Elise Shrock are being with us tonight. Thank you.[281.02][281.02](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Oliver.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Mr. Doris McNeil, former council lady, would you please stand, please? So glad to have you with us this evening.[291.33][291.33](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Ane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have several people I'd like to recognize from the community. Cliff Marsiglio, Deb Conway, Marsha Draper, who are very active in public safety throughout our city, as well as, again, Dr. Chris Holland, who had a beautiful prayer, and his son Jacob Holland. If you guys would stand and be recognized, please.[313.83][313.83](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Brown.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I would like to welcome a community leader and advocate from District 5, Leandre Level, tonight.[320.58][320.58](APPLAUSE).
Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize Mary Blackburn, who was a constituent in District 7.[324.58][324.58](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Ms. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce South Indy Quality of Life Michelle Salinas.[328.58][328.58](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Charles Johnson, the chairman of the Office of Financial Audit Committee.[336.24][336.24](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say thank you and welcome to a good friend and great community leader, Brandon Evans.[350.47][350.47](APPLAUSE).
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge and recognize the creator, founder, and originator of hashtag Lunch Bag, Greg Stowers.[355.47][355.47](APPLAUSE).
All right, counselors. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, January 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may come properly before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, I cause to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, January 13, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number eight, 2020, said hearing to be held on Monday, January 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Special Resolution Number 1 through 4. Joseph H. Hoxatt, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for January 6, 2020. Do I have consent?
Yes.
Very good. Madam Clerk, I believe that you have some recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. President. We would like to recognize the following counselors for attending all full council meetings and all respective committee meetings in 2019, thus having perfect attendance. Counselor Andy Harris, Counselor Jason Holliday, Counselor Maggie Lewis, Counselor Mike McQuillan, and Counselor Brian Maury.[474.47][474.47](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, congratulations to our colleagues. The next item on our agenda is presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 44, which recognizes the Indianapolis Hotel and Hospitality Community's commitment to bring awareness and its efforts to combat human trafficking.
Thank you, Mr. President. A special resolution recognizing the Indianapolis Hotel and Hospitality Community's commitment to bring awareness and its efforts to combat human trafficking. Whereas Indianapolis' hotel and hospitality industry is committed to the safety, well-being, and prosperity of all in Indianapolis community, as well as those visitors to the city, and whereas the hospitality industry comprised a significant portion of the labor force in Indianapolis, providing more than 81,600 invaluable full-time positions of all ages, races, and creed, earning distinctions such as the best places to work in Indiana in 2016, 2017, and 2019. And whereas the hospitality industry services nearly 29 million diverse visitors each year that come from all over this great nation and world and who spend billions annually, which in turn generates valuable revenue and taxes for state and local government used to contribute to benefit and improve of Indiana residents. And whereas with this significant responsibility in employment and visitor service, hotel management in Indianapolis, with the help of local law enforcement and education in conjunction with the Hotel and Lodging Association, will be using the month of January for an increased continuation of education, assessment, and training to combat the calamity that is human trafficking and to bring wider awareness of threats and warning signs of possible situations of human trafficking. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the commitment made by the Indianapolis Hotels and our city's broad commitment hospitality to combat human trafficking in order to increase safety and greater peace of mind and to residents of Indianapolis and those visiting our great community. The council sincerely thanks the city's hotel and hospitality industry for their sense of responsibility and pledges their commitment as well to help bring awareness to this issue with continuing education to combat this ever-growing problem. The mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here, too. The resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-34-114. Mr. President, and I so move. Mr. President... Pardon? Sorry.
All right. The motions are properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I have special permission to let Prosecutor Mears speak for a few moments?
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Counselor Jones, I appreciate your leadership on this issue. Some of the most difficult and challenging cases we face at the Marion County prosecutors are those involving human trafficking, and I wanted to thank the Indianapolis Hotel and Hospitality Industry for taking a leadership position on this issue and helping us raise awareness about the signs of human trafficking so we can better confront the challenges that we face each and every single day. So I just want to say thank you for your support and from the support from the hotel and hospitality industry.[690.12][690.12](APPLAUSE).
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 45, which encourages the Indianapolis Power and Light Company to update its 2019 Integrated Resource Plan immediately, stop burning coal at its Petersburg super polluter coal plant by 2028, and replace any needed capacity with clean renewable energy efficiency and energy storage. Whereas, a majority of members of the City County Council communicated their desire to IPL CEO Vincent Parisi that Indianapolis Power and Light retire all four of its units at Petersburg super polluter coal plant during IPL's 2019 Integrated Resource Plan process. And whereas...
Whereas Indianapolis Power and Light Company has filed its 2019 Integrated Resource Plan, retiring only the two smaller units at its Petersburg super polluter coal plant. And whereas in 2017, the Indianapolis City County Council passed a resolution that initiated a process to reduce carbon emissions, increase energy efficiency and renewable energy use, and create a climate change resilient city that will protect future generations. And whereas...
The Thrive Plan was finalized last year and includes a goal for the City of Indianapolis to be powered by 100% renewable energy by 2050. And whereas...
Whereas the mayor of the City of Indianapolis sent a letter to IPL on December 6, 2019, asking the utility to use more renewable energy. The city requests that IPL accelerate its overall renewable energy deployment goals to be better aligned with those of the city, the mayor wrote, and...
Whereas increased cost-effective investments in solar, wind, and energy efficiency can create good jobs and economic opportunities for Indiana manufacturers, Indiana rural communities, and Indianapolis urban neighborhoods while reducing electricity bills. And whereas...
Whereas IPL currently gets nearly 60% of its generation from the Petersburg super polluter coal plant, 36% from gas, and only 5% from renewable energy, making Indianapolis' utility 95% dependent on fossil fuels. And...
And whereas, after retiring two coal units, IPL currently plans to continue to burn coal at two units at the Petersburg super polluter coal plant until 2042. And whereas the climate crisis demands that we act to reduce dependence on coal and fossil fuels as soon as possible. And the most recent United Nations climate report stated that the world needs to cut carbon pollution 45% by 2030. Now, therefore...
Be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City County Council asks Indianapolis Power and Light to immediately update its 2019 Integrated Resource Plan, announce the total retirement of the Petersburg super polluter coal plant by no later than 2028, and plan to replace any needed power with affordable wind, solar, efficiency, demand response, and battery innovation. Section 2, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here, too. I so move, Mr. President.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to ask Gabe Philippelli, who is a professor at IUPUI, Director of Urban Health...
Exactly.
He's a professor of earth science to speak here.
Great. Thank you, and good evening, counselors. I am also have been involved in the Purdue Climate Change Research Center's Indiana Assessment of Impacts of Climate Change on Hoosiers. And I'm here to tell you that coal is definitely on its way out, and there's a lot of reasons why it's on its way out. First of which, of course, is catastrophic climate change, from rising seas to burning forests, and to the very fact that the last five years of our instrumental record have been the hottest five years ever recorded. All leads us to know that carbon needs to be removed from our system. And furthermore, there's tremendous number of renewable options that exist now, as well as storage options. From the perspective of health and Hoosier health, we know that climate change is already impacting Hoosiers. It's impacting them in a huge explosion of mosquitoes and ticks that carry diseases right here in Marion County, as well as other places. We know it causes heat stress and death, as exemplified by the recent Chicago heat wave. But even locally, local to plants like Petersburg is issues of air pollution, mercury, lead, and particulates that shortens Hoosier lives, sickens them, and significantly impacts children, particularly their respiratory health. Coal plants should no longer be given any kind of lifelines. They have... We shouldn't be supporting basically this 19th century technology in the 21st century. So there's a lot of reasons for supporting this. Thank you very much, Counsel.
Thank you.[1026.43][1026.43](APPLAUSE).
Mr. President, I would also ask that Madam Clerk deliver a copy of this to IPL as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1039.52][1039.52](APPLAUSE). The next item on our agenda is proposal number 46, which celebrates the 15th anniversary of Engaging Solutions.[1051.73][1051.73](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution celebrating the 15th anniversary of Engaging Solutions LLC. Whereas Engaging Solutions was established in January 2005 by Debbie Wilson, Benita Moore, Tammy Butler Robinson, and soon after added a fourth partner, Mr. Charles Johnson. The company, which operates as a limited liability company, is a management consulting firm that helps clients grow revenue, reduce costs, and maintain compliance. And...
Whereas Engaging Solutions is a collaboration of professionals with diverse expertise and experiences spanning more than 100 years of work in public, private, and non-for-profit arenas. The company is a leader in fiscal management and accountability and understands how to execute effective monitoring methods while maintaining the ability to work cooperatively with a wide range of service providers and organizers. And whereas Engaging Solutions is a certified minority women disadvantaged business expertise in the states of Indiana, Illinois, Georgia, Kentucky, Tennessee, Missouri, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Virginia by the City of Indianapolis, the Indiana Minority Supplier Diversity Council, and is an 8A certified company. The company has received numerous awards and has been featured in several publications. And whereas...
Engaging Solutions has a capacity to provide supplier diversity and XBE outreach, call center services, baseline and gap analysis, housing studies, community economic development plans, transportation-related studies, focus groups, community meetings, stakeholder engagement, fiscal management, and accountability. Whereas Engaging Solutions' major accomplishments include, but do not limit to, contracts with the Indiana Department of Transportation, Indiana University, the Indiana State Department of Health, Indiana Department of Workforce Development, Indigo, the City of Indianapolis, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Indianapolis Public Schools District, Well Point, Indiana Black Expo, and American Civil Liberties Union. And whereas...
Whereas Engaging Solutions LLC is committed to improving its community through volunteerism and community service, coupled with its mission of taking a collaborative approach to improving the communities they serve. And whereas the perseverance and innovation of Engaging Solutions has positioned them as one of the nation's premier business consultancy entities. Now, therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes and celebrates the 15th anniversary of Engaging Solutions LLC. Section 2, the council congratulates Engaging Solutions on their many accomplishments and wishes them continued growth and success. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here, too, which he has done. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you. Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to ask Mr. Charles to come forward and share a few words with us.
Please.
I am overwhelmed, humbled, very thankful to the counselors here for the City of Indianapolis. You've created an environment for small businesses to grow because from a vision of three young ladies, we've grown to over 120 people here in Indianapolis, and I'm sure a lot of them represent your districts here. So we really, really appreciate the environment you've created and the opportunities you've created for small business here. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks.[1303.21][1303.21](APPLAUSE).
Mr. President, it gave me great honor to help witness this celebration for Engaging Solutions because the time has gone so fast. It seemed like yesterday. I was the president of the City County Council at that time when the Engaging Solutions first came together and became an organization. And it's good to see that we are finally developing some young Afro-American business that has been successful. Thank you, and thank you to the Engaging Solutions, and may you continue to do well.[1343.01][1343.01](APPLAUSE).
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 13, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like, with consent, take proposals number 13 and 14 together, please.
Consent.
Proposal number 13 reappoints Gregory Starwitz Jr. to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 14, 2020, reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Counsel Oliver moves, seconded by Counsel Ms. Carey to send both proposals to the full council. They do pass recommendation. Both proposals passed by votes of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motions are properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go immediately to the board for our vote.[1394.33][1394.33](APPLAUSE). The next item on our agenda is proposal number 17, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 together.
Pennsylvania, and Virginia. By the city of Indianapolis, the Indiana Minority Supplier Diversity Council and is an 8A certified company. The company has received numerous awards and has been featured in several publications and whereas.
And Engaging Solutions has a capacity to provide supplier diversity and XPE outreach, call center services, baseline and gap analysis, housing studies, community economic development plans, transportation-related studies, focus groups, community meetings, stakeholder engagement, fiscal management, and accountability. Whereas Engaging Solutions' major accomplishments include but do not limit to contracts with the Indiana Department of Transportation, Indiana University, the Indiana State Department of Health, Indiana Department of Workforce Development, Indigo, the City of Indianapolis, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Indianapolis Public Schools District, Well Point, Indiana Black Expo, and American Civil Liberties Union and whereas.
Whereas Engaging Solutions LLC is committed to improving its community through volunteerism and community service, coupled with its mission of taking a collaborative approach to improving the communities they serve and. Whereas the perseverance and innovation of Engaging Solutions has positioned them as one of the nation's premier business consultancy entities now therefore.
Be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognized and celebrates the 15th anniversary of Engaging Solutions LLC. Section two, the council congratulates Engaging Solutions on their many accomplishments and wishes them continued growth and success. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has done. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you. Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to ask Mr. Charles to come forward and share a few words with us.
Please.
I am overwhelmed, humbled, very thankful to the councilors here for the city of Indianapolis. You've created an environment for small businesses to grow because from a vision of three young ladies, we've grown to over 120 people here in Indianapolis, and I'm sure a lot of them represent your districts here. So we really, really appreciate the environment you've created and the opportunities you've created for small business here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's just for you. Yes.
Mr. President, it gave me great honor to help witness this celebration for Engaging Solution because the time has gone so fast. It seems like yesterday. I was the president of the City-County Council at that time when the Engaging Solutions first came together and became an organization, and it's good to see that we are finally developing some young Afro-American business that has been successful. Thank you, and thank you to the Engaging Solution, and may you continue to do well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Maggie, for all you do. Good job. Just remember how. Great job.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 13, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like with consent, take proposal number 13 and 14 together, please.
Consent.
Proposal number 13 reappoints Gregory A. Starwes Jr. to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 14, 2020, reappoints Mark Webster to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Counsel Oliver Moot, seconded by Counsel Misskary, to send both proposals to the full council that do pass recommendation. Both proposals passed by votes of 12 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Right, seeing none, we'll go immediately to the board for our vote. Next item on our agenda is proposal number 15, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 15 and 16 together. Thank you. Proposal number 15 reappoints Dr. Henry Fernandez to the Board of Public Works, and proposal number 16 reappoints Henry Williams to the Board of Public Works. Counsel Oliver Moot, seconded by Counsel Carlino, to send proposals number 15 and 16 to the full council that do pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 12 to zero, and I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Right, seeing none, proceed immediately to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 17, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals numbers 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 together. Proposal number 17 reappoints Rodrick Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals. Proposal number 18 reappoints Brian Robinson to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division One. Proposal number 19 reappoints Mary Kelly to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Two. Proposal number 20 reappoints Mark Young to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Two. Proposal number 21 reappoints Craig Von Daleven, I messed that up, Daleen, to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Three. All proposals passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Counsel Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding proposal 21, I abstained in committee. Mr. Von Daleen's a customer of mine, so I think I should abstain of the vote as well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 22, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 22 reappoints Janice Goslin Dunlap to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division Three. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 23, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 23 reappoints Ron Hampton to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals to serve as an alternate. Mr. Hampton appeared before the committee on Monday, January 13, 2020, to seek appointment and to answer questions. Mr. Hampton stated that he worked for the Department of Metropolitan Development Department regarding hearings and board meetings for the past 37 years. He stated that he would enjoy the opportunity and is willing to serve. He retired on December 26, 2019. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second. Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 26 through 30 refer to the Administration and Finance Committee and were introduced by Counsel Johnson. Proposal number 26 approves the mayor's appointment of Thomas Cook as the deputy of, as chief deputy mayor, excuse me. Proposal number 27 approves the mayor's appointment of Angela Smith Jones as deputy mayor for economic development. Proposal number 28 approves the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bennett as deputy mayor for community development. Proposal number 29 approves the mayor's appointment of Dr. David Hampton as deputy mayor for neighborhood engagement. Proposal number 30 approves the mayor's appointment of Hope Triple as the director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Proposal numbers 31 through 33 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counselor Lewis. Proposal number 31 approves the mayor's appointment of Emily Mack as the director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Proposal number 32 approves the mayor's appointment of Brian Madison as the director of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 33 approves the amounts locations and programmatic, programmatic, I'm sorry, operation of certain projects to be funded from the Community Development Grants Fund. Proposal number 34, introduced by Counsel Ossely, I mean Counsel Oliver, referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee, approves the appointment, the mayor's appointment of Linda Brofflet as the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposal numbers 35 through 39 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counsel Robinson. Proposal number 35 approves the mayor's appointment of Paul T. Babcock as the director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 36 approves the mayor's appointment of Randall Taylor as the chief of police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal number 37 approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as the chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. Proposal number 38 approves the mayor's appointment of Gina W. Bevan as the director of the Citizen Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 39 confirms the mayor's, the Marion County Public Defender Board's nomination of Robert J. Hill as the chief Marion County Public Defender. Proposals number, proposal numbers 40 and 41 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counsel Ossely. Proposal number 40 approves the additional appropriation of $250,000 in the 2020 budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety Consolidated County General Fund, character three, to be used to contract legal and informational services for initiatives related to tenants' rights. Proposal number 41 requires landlords to give tenants notice of their rights and responsibilities to connect tenants to legal assistance where necessary, to vindicate their rights and avoid eviction, to protect tenants from retaliation for exercising their rights, and to prohibit discrimination against advocates for housing based on expunged or sealed criminal convictions. Proposal number 42, introduced by Counselor Adamson, refer to the Public Works Committee, approves the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as the director of the Department of Public Works. Proposal number 43, introduced by councilors Maury, Anay, Dilk, Hart, and Holliday, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, establishes a study commission to, one, review the status of the city's long- and short-term response to violent crime; two, recommend any needed council proposals; and three, gather information from experts in criminal justice, law enforcement, education, and community members to recommend additional policy changes to advance the cause of reducing violent crime in Indianapolis. Proposal number 47, introduced by Counsel Johnson, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcoholic Beverage Board of Marion County. Proposal number 48, introduced by Counsel Gray, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, appoints Ted Notting to the Marion County Health and Hospital Corporation Board of Trustees. Proposal number 49 through 55 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counsel Lewis. Proposal number 49 reappoints Anthony Bridgeman to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 50 reappoints Brian Barton to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 51 reappoints Kathy Good to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 52 reappoints Ann Lear to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number 53 reappoint Sally Cook to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number 54 reappoints Karen Calistino Horseman to the Animal Services Advisory Board. Proposal number 55 reappoints Stacy Hurley to the Animal Services Advisory Board. Proposals numbers 56 through 58 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number 56, introduced by Counsel Robinson, reappoints Louis Propheta to the Indianapolis Marion County Forensic Services Board. Proposal number 57, introduced by Counsel Robinson, reappoints Paula Finch to the Juvenile Detention Center Advisory Board. Proposal number 58, introduced by Counsel Ossely, appoints Doris Menton McNeil to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal numbers 59 and 60 refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee. Proposal number 59, introduced by Counsel Ossely, appoints Lys Pace to the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 60, introduced by Counsel Gray, reappoints Maggie Lewis to the Capital Improvement Board of Managers. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal numbers 61 through 66 are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. Proposal number 8, 2020, is a rezoning ordinance for Lawrence Township in District 13, located at 7600 and 7602 Pendleton Pike, 4326 and 4327 Sellers Street. Zoning case number 2019 ZON 113 was recommended for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on December 26, 2019. And on January 6, 2020, District Counsel Graves called the matter down for a public hearing. A preliminary hearing was held by general counsel as per counsel rules, and will now go to Counsel Graves for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have received a statement from the remonstrator's attorney in rezoning case 2019 ZON 113, proposal number 8, 2020, that indicates his wish to withdraw his remonstrance and that he will no longer oppose the Metropolitan Development Commission's recommendation for rezoning of these parcels located at 7600 and 7602 Pendleton Pike and 4326, 4327 Sellers Street in Lawrence. Because this rezoning matter has been advertised for public hearing, other members of the public should still be allowed to testify if they have attended tonight's hearing for that purpose. If there is no further remonstrance forthcoming, the petitioner has agreed to forego their formal presentation and proceed to the vote. I will move, after allowing for public testimony, that we accept the MDC's recommendation and adopt the rezoning as submitted for approval.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from councilors? Right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 8, 2020? Seeing no one, again, are there any comments or questions from fellow councilors? The motion's been duly made and seconded. We'll now go to the board for a vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. There is no business under Special Orders unfinished business. There is no business under Special Orders final adoption. There is no business under Special Orders or Special Service District Councils, and there is no business under new business. The next item on our agenda then is announcements and adjournment. The documented agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counsel Ossely in memory of Bernice Hobbs, by councilors Maury, Holliday, Anay, Dilk, and Hart in memory of Richard Zaffey, by Counsel Maury in memory of Joseph Woolsey, Mark Aklemeier, Samuel Baskerville, and Andrew Borton, by Counsel Anay in memory of Anna Marie Kiefer, by Counsel Lewis in memory George Williamson, by Counsel Evans in memory of Harriet Liz Wengler, by Counsel Lewis in memory of Ellen Hamilton. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-County Council in recognition and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask at the support of fellow councilors, I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent records of this body, and that I, and that a letter bearing the council's seal and signature of the president be sent to each family of the person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the request so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourn.